You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 27th, 2025 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
We are now calling the January regular council meeting to order. If you will all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Brett?
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Auger, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Kessler?
Present.
Mr. Keel?
Present.
Mr. Karanka?
Present.
Mr. Mullenhauer?
Present.
Mr. Novak?
Present.
Mr. Pressle?
Present.
And Mr. Yagowski?
He said present, I saw it.
You have a quorum.
Present, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Since we don't have it on the agenda, I'm gonna call for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I have a couple corrections to this evening's agenda. Under new business, number four, scratch the word maintenance and add full-time janitor. Need to add a number five, permission to hire archive specialist for department or recorder. Number six, permission to hire treasurer's first deputy in treasurer's department. Number seven, update all funding and resolutions and ordinances. And then number eight, which we just received, was permission to advertise for IC Assistant Director.
IT.
And then under old business, if we could please remove amended salary ordinance. And one last correction, down under county coroner, permission for $325 for training lodging, not to exceed $325.
Oh, there you go. If you wouldn't mind.
Mr. President, I'd also like to add under La Porte County probation, sorry. I'd also like to add under La Porte County probation, instead of not to exceed 2,000, it'd be not to exceed 7,000, it'd be for one laptop for a magistrate link, a Surface Pro for Judge Dahlbrink, and two laptops for circuit court.
So motion to have second?
I'll second it with a question. The removal of the salary ordinance, what was the, what's the background there?
At this point, with some corrections that have been communicated with the auditor's office, they're still making some corrections in order to get an accurate salary ordinance in front of us. So all in favor of accepting the amended agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We now come to the appointment of the council attorney. As we all just went through an executive session that was where we were conducting interviews, we'll entertain motions for council attorney.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, for nominations, right?
For nominations.
Nominate Christopher Willoughby.
I would second it, if necessary.
I'm getting a no, it's not necessary, but thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Doug Beege.
Okay. Any further nominations? Nominations are closed. Mr. Attorney, do I have to do these by voice vote?
Are you gonna do by roll call?
By roll call. Correct. Thank you.
You just blurt out whoever you want.
After the auditor calls your name.
If I may, you can tell me the person that you, her, man, has two names, Chris Willoughby and the other name Doug Beege. Okay, Mr. Yagowski?
Doug Beege.
Mr. Pressle?
Doug Beege.
Mr. Novak?
Beege.
Mr. Mullenhauer?
Willoughby.
Mr. Karanka?
Willoughby.
Mr. Keel?
Willoughby.
Mr. Kessler?
Beege.
By vote, we have four votes for Doug Beege, three vote for Willoughby, therefore Doug Beege is the winner.
May I say something?
Go ahead.
I just wanna thank everybody that applied and came out, we absolutely appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thing that goes for everybody.
Very qualified people.
All right, so now we are down to approval of the November 2024 and December 2024 meeting minutes. If you can take a motion as individuals or as an aggregate.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the November 2024 and the December 2024 minutes. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the 2025, January 2025 reorganizational meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve those minutes with one amendment on pages two and three. Ron Schaefer's last name is misspelled, it should have one F, and the first E should be not in there. Otherwise, that looks good.
Okay. So another, second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favors?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Public comment? Anybody from the public?
Good evening, Steve Hollifield, 678-2E, 100 South. As a commissioner, I went down to the State House, spent two days down there, spoke with representatives, Indiana Finance Authority. I emailed you guys the stuff that Dan Hughie sent me from the IFA about our bond rating and the other things. Mr. Rosa Bobser, he told me he's been well aware of that, working on it diligently before it even went down there. But some other things down there that I think we need to take heed to. There are 14 bills that are gonna freeze property taxes or reduce them, or eliminate some completely. That's gonna affect us a lot. Two of them are down there, two more bills are for property tax bills for vets and 65-plus over. I have no problem with any of those, I don't believe they're gonna affect us that much. Now, some things that are gonna help us, they're gonna shrink to local, there's three bills to help shrink local expenses. One of them is to help pool entities can go together, even outside of the county, to purchase insurance at a better premium rate by pooling the insurance rates together. One that's gonna really help us a lot tremendously, and it's gonna eliminate a lot of confusion. There are four bills to eliminate posting of the minutes in newspapers. They're going to post them either on our local website, which we have for the county, we have access to that, or the state website, depending on which bill gets passed, but we will not no longer have to post them in the newspapers because as we all know, that gets rather expensive after a while.
I think so.
There are also four bills down there concerning energy and utilities. One of the bills is gonna track costs, so that way everybody can know where our cost and rates are going every year. Road funding bills, there's three. One of them is gonna determine how it's dispersed. Instead of using the miles you get for your inventory, they're gonna determine, well, you've got X amount of miles that have very little travel on them, they're gonna remove the funding for those, you're not gonna give as many funding for those roads that are less traveled. How they're gonna do that, I have no idea. Then there's something else they're discussing down there, local option sales taxes to use for infrastructure. And they wanna tie the wheel tax, there's no bill for it this year, but they're pushing and talking a wheel tax, they want us to put a wheel tax on. They're trying to get us to use more local ideas up here, that way they're the good guys, we're the bad guys. And the possibility that wheels tax could be tied to whether or not we get our community crossing grant. That's, that's a big, that's a big item there. Government reform bills, there's five of them. The majority of them, they're wanting to shrink some of the local governments we have. House Bill 1233 is the biggest one of all. I'm sure, Mr. Novak, you in the fire department, you've heard about that one, it's gonna eliminate all township whatsoever. It'll save a lot of money, it's gonna create a lot more headaches for us in the long run, and they're really diligently looking at that, and there will be several House amendments in committee when it goes, before it comes out and goes to the Senate. I spent 45 minutes with Mrs. Angelman on that bill, and she's a sponsor of it. Some other bills that we need to be paying attention to, 1198 increases the dollar amounts for public works that we can do in-house instead of sending it out. We will be required, if House Bill 1370 passes, to upload all of our contracts, any contract we do with a lawyer, firms for financials, anything else that commissioners do, that must be uploaded to Gateway if this bill passes. House Bill 1662, this is, will go along, we just gave money to that, was it the shelter or the home, the people that wanna help here in the county with opia and all that. There's money to help with the homeless, which were, the nest just started at, and for mental health facilities and shelters here in the county. So there's a lot of stuff happening, and I think we need to be aware of that, and just know, they're shrinking what we're getting, but they're still expecting us providing the same exact services that we have been. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Ralph Malecki, 8251 South, 900 West, Wanata. Yeah, I was gonna bring up the Senate Bill 1233, they wanna eliminate the, all responsibility for the township trustees and, you know, the emergency departments. Not happy with that. And then, for the commissioner and the council, are we paying county employees to go get their haircut with company or county vehicles on county time?
Nothing I'm aware of, but that's something to discuss, but one thing, let me be cautious here, we can't discuss public employee issues in these public meetings, right? So to the defense of the employee, you don't wanna get into too many of those details during public.
Can't name names.
I don't know the name.
Oh, okay.
I just got the last two digits of the county license plate.
Obviously, you saw somebody getting their haircut.
In Porter County, Velpo.
Okay.
Company, county vehicle.
Mr. Malecki, if you would, reach out to me personally and we'll look into this. Thank you.
Or have a conversation with the commissioner there. I can't remember his name, Steve, Steve.
Any other members of the public? Anyone from Zoom? Okay, public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Any department heads?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lynn Swanson, La Porte County Coroner. Today I was able to finish up the totals for what our office did for all of 2024 as far as calls. We had a total of 321 calls. Of those calls, 18 were accidents, seven homicides, 31 overdoses, 21 suicides, 237 naturals, and seven undetermined. Under the accidents, there were two chokings, two drownings, 12 motor vehicle accidents, and two work-related accidents. Homicide, there was a complication from a gunshot wound in 2022, which ended up being ruled as a homicide, cuz it was a gunshot wound. One execution, three gunshot wounds, one vehicle versus pedestrian, and one stabbing. Suicides, one asphyxiation, one carbon monoxide poisoning, eight gunshot wounds, nine hangings, one motor vehicle accident, and one pedestrian versus train. Of the overdoses, which there were 31, 21 of those involved fentanyl. So fentanyl is still a really big problem around here. The undetermined, there was one possible carbon monoxide poisoning, but he also had a high alcohol content, so we weren't able to determine what was the actual cause. One Sid's death, and the other five were undetermined because they were bodies that were so decomped, there was no way to do a toxicology or an autopsy on them. So we were pretty busy last year. We also just celebrated Medical Legal Death Investigators Week, January 19th through the 25th, in which the commissioners did a proclamation for that week for us, for that office. First time, it's the second year that the governor has recognized us, first time that the county commissioners have recognized us, so we appreciate that. That's all I have so far.
One quick, go ahead, no, go ahead. So you have the new forensic investigator program that we started late last year. Has that helped at all with, at least with, I think you only had it for the last quarter of '24?
Right. It's been kind of a slow start. Some of the families just are not willing to wanna sit down and talk about it yet. We thought, you know, maybe giving them some time, it would help, it doesn't seem to be. I think we've had only two families at this point that have actually gone through the whole process, and Chris just, just sent me the report, the quarterly report on that, and what his findings were on that.
Okay, thank you.
How did the suicide and the overdose numbers trend from the previous years? And if you don't have that with you, if you could get it?
Yeah, I don't.
Just email it to us.
I don't have the actual numbers, I believe overdoses are down, suicides are definitely up.
If you could give us?
Sure.
The trending numbers, I'd appreciate it. Whenever we get to you, don't hurry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not typically during these meetings, but would probably be, should be more than happy to ask questions after, after the meeting. Any further department heads? Any department heads on Zoom? All right, department head reports are closed. Liaison assignments and reports. So, wanna start with liaison reports for anything from council last month? Anybody want, anyone want to add anything? Mr. Mullenhauer? No?
I attended the solid waste district board meeting this week, and everything's going fine out there, so.
All right. Mr. Keel?
I attended the NERPC full commission meeting recently, I spoke with the county recorder a couple times over the last month, and I also spoke with the county coroner about, she had come to us with a request for a TV in her conference room, and I think it's worthwhile for us to take a look at where she wanted to place it and perhaps reconsider that. She sent me some photos of where it was supposed to be and some additional details, and I think it might be worthy of us reconsidering. So I encourage you to talk with her and take a look for yourselves.
Okay. Mr. Novak?
Attended the 911 advisory board meeting, FMAC meeting, insurance meeting, met with the, talked with the auditor several times. The other thing that is coming up on February 5th, and I think everybody up here might have got an invite to it, is a heart safe community program, it's a luncheon that's gonna be held at the Healthcare Foundation. So La Porte City became a health safe community, and we're looking to do that throughout the entire county. So if you didn't get an email invite on that for the lunch?
5th or 4th?
It might be, I think it might be the 4th.
I think the 4th.
Yeah, I think you're right. It's the 4th, and it's at 11:30 at the Healthcare Foundation. So.
Thank you. Mr. Pressle?
Nothing to report at this time, Mr. President.
Mr. Kessler?
Same here, nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Yagowski?
I'll figure this time.
Thank you.
Approval of the liaison assignment.
I guess the one thing I would like to add is just the review, that I think most of us have had some time to review issues with the latest flood in the courthouse, and if at times all had the opportunity to see what kind of damage and what's left to be covered. So, at this time, any discussion on the liaison assignments for 2025?
Motion to approve the 2025 list.
Second? Motion and a second, any discussion? One thing I'd like to mention is, Mr. Keel, would you consider having someone added to the NERPC with you in tandem, being potential to, as an onboarding with your future endeavors?
That would probably need to be run past the attorney, there's only one appointee from each organization to these, to these bodies. However, it could be possible if there was an event that I couldn't, or an instance where I couldn't make a meeting for you to appoint someone for that meeting and then revert back.
Proxies?
No proxies, no. I know there has been times in the past where the mayor of Gary, several terms ago, would send a councilwoman in her place if she couldn't make it, but a little bit extra work. That being said, I don't believe I'll have any issue making most of the full commission meetings, I've looked at my calendar and I should be able to make most of them, so I'm not anticipating any major conflicts there.
All right. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the? Roll call. Roll by roll call.
Mr. Keel?
Aye.
Mr. Karanka?
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Pressle?
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Seven to. Thank you. Mr. Auditor, if you have any correspondence?
We shared the only correspondence with you that most of you received, and that had to do with the event with solid waste in February, and we received that by email. We failed to bring the few copies that were there, so, but you have all the information.
Yes, thank you for that. Ordinances and resolutions, I do not believe we have any of that on the agenda for tonight, so we'll move on to new business. Number one, consider former council president Novak's authorization to hire replacement positions for public health nurse in the La Porte County Health Department. Any discussion, any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
I didn't hear who made the motion.
Second.
Thank you. So, Mike, did you catch?
I got it, I got the motion.
All right.
We're team hearing, Scotty.
Perfect. All right, all in favor for? Roll. For everyone is? All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Novak. All right, Mr. Auditor, if you'd call the roll.
Okay.
Mr. Yagowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Keel?
Aye.
Mr. Karanka?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Pressle?
Aye.
Seven to.
All right. Number two, consider, consider request by Director Campbell from the La Porte County Juvenile Services Center to hire part-time nurse, 15 hours per week maximum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And congratulations to Mr. Kessler and Mr. Pressle.
Thank you.
Good to meet both of you gentlemen tonight. Coming before the council tonight to request to hire a part-time nurse. We've currently had a full-time nurse position open for approximately six, for approximately three years, and we've been able to hire one. We were fortunate to come across a fully qualified nurse who was willing to come to our facility and put in 15 hours, at least 15 hours a week, but no more than 15 hours per week. Just to give you a little backdrop, we currently have a full-time wage, which is $60,928, and the nurse's position is a PAT 6. We're asking for the part-time employee, she won't have any benefits at all. We are comparing our salary, the full-time nurse, with the director of nursing for the La Porte County Health Department, and they make $72,000. As far as part-time wages go, the state average according to Indeed for part-time pay is $44.14 an hour. The national average for an RN is $43.86 per hour, and that was according to Indeed. Your first page of your paperwork that I gave you in the blue folder will verify what the national and state average is. And so we took that into consideration, and she's willing to come over for about 15, no more than 15 hours per week. And at the state average, if we paid her at the state average, that would be $662 per week, or $34,424 per year. We could take that out of the budget at $60,928 that we already have. We want to request a little bit more per hour for her because she's, has 20 years of experience, and that should bump her up in pay. She works full-time at the Lake County Juvenile Center, and working as a nurse within the juvenile center is difficult because we have not only state qualifications and all the degrees that you have to have, but you also have to have a competency in DOC standards and DCS standards. And with her 20 years' experience, normally a nurse starting off, the average was 44, but it can go all the way up to 57. With her experience, we're asking the council to consider paying her $48 per hour, which comes down to $720 per week, or $37,444 a year, which still saves us off the $60,000. And we'd like to hire her part-time until we can fire a full-time nurse, and that would satisfy a lot of the needs that we had. Also attached to my paperwork is some of the duties, if you're unaware of what is required of a nurse that works for us, it's been pretty much laid out in the paperwork, and that is my request for the council.
Any comments from the council?
What, go ahead?
I got a question. As a part-time employee, and I don't think things have changed, but when I was sheriff and we had, had to have a part-time nurse, we were only paid them, I think it was tops $17.50 an hour, something like that.
Yeah, you can't get anyone.
No, I know you couldn't, we couldn't either, but since when did this ordinance, when did that policy change?
I think where Councilman Mullenhauer is going is, I mean, the position as it exists now is part of our job classification, so you said it was a PAT?
PAT 6.
PAT 6.
But this is part-time.
You need an amendment to the salary ordinance in order to be able to create the part-time position and to pay for that.
Okay. So you say the request for a part-time nurse isn't even possible?
It'd be an amendment to the ordinance.
It wouldn't be able to be done tonight. I do appreciate the savings, particularly from the insurance costs, that is appealing, so.
Keep in mind that that will be temporary until we could find a part-time nurse, but we keep her, keep her there because we're incurring cost. Everything that is required to be done by a nurse right now, we have to take them to La Porte Hospital, and we're there quite often, from TV test to every time a resident goes into a restraint or has any type of injury, we have to take them to the La Porte Hospital, so we're incurring cost in that manner, and I think it would be cost-effective to have a part-time nurse until we can find a full-time nurse. So I wasn't aware of that fact, I've made inquiry about whether or not we could have a part-time nurse, also sent a few emails to Mr. DiMartino, and was just waiting for some type of response as to how to go about doing this.
What is it, what are they currently making in Lake County?
I don't know the answer to that, but it's, I did give the state average. I don't know what they're making in Lake County, I don't know what she makes. I could easily get that, though.
So in addition to the insurance savings and the savings that you mentioned, is there any way to also get the expenditures last year to La Porte Hospital?
Yes, absolutely. I could get those and make.
Related to these duties only, right?
Sure.
Holding this over to next month to get this all squared up, is that?
So tell me, tell me exactly what it is you'd like for me to present to you?
Well, so for, my request would be the, what billings from La Porte Hospital would be covered by this roll being filled?
Okay.
And then what is, I guess I'm looking more to Mr. DiMartino and the auditor's team, what would it take in order to make this modification as part of the finalization of the salary ordinance?
You'd have to amend the salary ordinance when you do the salary ordinance next month. I know that I reached out to QCC and I've sent information to Mr. Novak and Mr. Campbell regarding, you know, QCC provides all our medical care in the jail, and I did send that information, but if you, you know, you want a part-time nurse?
But if you, you know, you want a part-time nurse, you'll have to put it in the salary ordinance, put a range in there and, and approve.
And this, the advantage here gives us a little bit, when it comes to the budget, I would think, because I don't think you have, uh, contracted services currently in the budget.
Well, I think he has a, I think he has a nurse.
Full nurse.
He's got a full nurse, that's what I mean, right?
Structure it.
What budget for a full-time nurse sits, uh, sixty thousand and nine hundred and twenty-eight?
Right, and what, to my point is, it falls more into the salary side of the budget instead of contracted services, which is what QCC would be?
Correct.
Okay. You could easily just transfer it between those major budget classifications with council approval. Have you considered using a third-party vendor to do the work, as Mr. Di Martino had suggested, what's your thoughts?
We have attempted to do so, uh, but have been unsuccessful.
Could you send that information there?
I've contacted Community Corrections, and I don't think they even have a, uh, a nursing contract. And also, um, the Sheriff's Department, whoever they use, they never got back with us. We made several attempts, not with the Sheriff's Department, with the company that they use, so.
They got back to me and I forwarded that information.
You forwarded that to the rest of the council?
Yes.
I don't recall ever getting that email.
Okay, I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. I was, I've never seen that.
I'd like to see us, I, I don't know if I want to table it or hold it over till next month.
Remediable to that?
Yeah. Motion to table till next meeting.
Second. Alright, motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Host?
Oh.
Oh.
We'll let it slide.
Let's move on to the, the next matter.
Thank you.
We'll go to jail.
Alright. Thank you. Um, you are, do we want to entertain moving right on down to the old business for the General Services Center, or leave run as the agenda is written right now?
No, don't make Mr. Campbell wait.
I didn't think so. Let's take care of it. So we're gonna jump down to old business item, we're gonna call it four. Submission of bids to be pre-approved for vehicle purchases, uh, for three vehicles to be used for transport purposes at the General Services Center.
May I?
You may.
These bids need to go to the commissioners for approval, not the council, correct?
Correct.
We can approve it, we can do a motion of support not to exceed, or we can pass it, I mean, we can...
Was Mr. Campbell before the commission previously with, with permission to approach the council?
With three bids?
Let, I, I don't know, I'll just check.
Let me get, let me give a context, um, and also, I think it's important that I give a context for Mr. Kessler and Mr. Pressle. Um, sometime in November of twenty twenty-three, um, we made inquiry about getting new vehicles. Um, at that time, the council was entertaining enterprise, uh, rental company and considering that, and we were told to put it on hold. Um, uh, we discovered that we had four vehicles that were in need of replacement. And so after waiting, um, for the entire year and nothing ever moved forward with that, we approached the council and requested to purchase four vehicles. And the, the, the way that we got to that place was we talked to county maintenance and asked them what type of a vehicle that they thought would be best that they could service, uh, since we were, uh, forward-thinking, and they gave us a list of the type of vehicles that was conducive to what we needed. And so we did a, um, we went to some of the local dealers, um, we looked at the QPA, couldn't find anything for minivans, and we came up, uh, with some pricing. In November of, of twenty-four, this council approved us for a hundred and twenty, twenty thousand. Um, and basically I was told at that time just to send these bids via email. I sent those bids via email and didn't get a response. Um, and I sent a second email and a third email without, um, any type of response. I think there was some miscommunication because at the December council meeting, they were looking for me to appear, but I thought all I had to do was give the information that I sent in an email. And that's how we got to this place, so I'm just here, I was requested to get a bid, um, and I did that from three local entities, it was their government bid, and came up with the three prices, uh, that you see before me. Uh, one of them was from Laporte Magnuson Chrysler, one from Michigan City, David Taylor Chrysler, and one was from Michiana Chrysler. And so that's how we got to this point. And I was also told that I could request a fourth vehicle in twenty twenty-five, um, but I needed to wait until twenty twenty-five to do that. So I've just given a context for Mr. Kessler and Mr. Pressle.
So I just want to re, go back, when it was approved by the council, it was approved subject to proof that there was a QPA used. There was no QPA used, so that's why that, you needed to go out and get the bids.
That would be incorrect, um, I was sent...
I believe that was correct.
I was sent, and was sent information about the QPA and, um, there was nothing available. So I was told to get a, I was told to get three bids from...
After that?
Yes.
Right, after the council meeting?
Yes, and I did that, I was just, I was told to send an email.
Correct.
Which I did.
No, but your three bids gotta go to the commissioners, they can't come to us.
We don't...
We did, we did clear, sorry?
And if I misinform you, I...
Well, we, we did mention that they have to go and fund the commissioners.
Okay.
We don't open bids up, they have to open the bids up at their meeting.
Okay.
So we cannot do that.
But, but Mark, I don't think they're bids, I think they're quotes.
They're quotes.
But they still need, they still need to go by the commission.
Right.
Right, so, okay, and also that, that, also, we were trying to get you to go to, to areas and see if we could find another, uh, vehicle so that we could get the state QPA, but we couldn't find one for you.
Right, right, and I, I, I agree with that assessment, and, um, I sent these bids in November and send a, sent a second email, but I got no response from anyone in the council. And so that's why I'm a little confused now, after, from November up until this time, why no one suggested to me that I needed to show these bids to the commissioners.
I, we don't walk the people normally through the process, we could do that, I'm sorry if you misunderstood that, but normally we don't, you, the, the process for, for government is to go and fund the commissioners first.
And, and let's get this, Campbell...
If I'd have known that you needed the help in that part, I would have done that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. Di Martino?
Commission meetings next week.
Okay.
Let's just get on the agenda and...
Simple as that. I, I will expedite this, I'll remake the motion, you said it was a hundred and twenty, what was the amount that was approved?
It was a hundred and twenty at that time.
At that time, what do you mean, is it different now?
Well, the bids, obviously the bids covered that.
It was a hundred and twenty. It hasn't changed unless you, you gentlemen deem it changed.
So I'll make a motion that we proceed with the approval of the money, funds for that, subject to you getting approval from the commissioners next week. So, so then you don't have to come back to the council.
I would respectfully ask, uh, that it be...
Well, we have to appropriate it.
Yeah.
But we did appropriate it.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't.
No?
No, we didn't.
Just coming back.
We, we, we approved it, we approved it in...
November.
November. With the condition that he would provide us, this is how we left it, you get us the QPA or whatever the governmental thing was,
Okay.
prior to, and, and everything would be good, we didn't have to do anything else. The council gave us the authority to proceed with that, to finish that. They, there was no state QPA, there was no governmental QPA pricing. So I told you, you're gonna have to go out and get some prices.
And, and that's...
And that's exactly what you did.
In November, that's why I sent the three, the, I sent the email to every council person requesting what are the next steps that I need you to do.
So, since it was voted on and approved...
Was it published and voted on and approved and appropriated?
Well, how would we have voted on? I pulled up the minutes from the October twenty-eighth meeting, and it...
Yeah, it was, it wa- Mr. President, it was brought up at the time that we were still questioning whether we have state price or not. So we did not approve that, it was on condition of...
Correct, I remember that appropriately. The one thing that we did get back from state QPA from my memory was the fact that it was coming back with basically a twelve-seat tour bus. I'd like, and not, not the type of vehicle that he was looking for and needed, and that's where the QPA fell short, it did not have...
I'm gonna ask Mr. Keel to read the minutes.
The minutes from the October twenty-eighth meeting read, um, uh, "Motion to amend the original motion of support into a motion to approve not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand out of lit economic development. Should the Chrysler dealership's government fleet rate, quote, "be compliant with the purchasing statute made by Mr. Rosenbaum and seconded by Mr. Karanka." Mr. Rosenbaum clarified that if the dealership's quote was not compliant with the purchasing statute, then the item would be appropriated for the next regular meeting.
This is what we need to do.
Reappropriate.
Go to the commission, publish it, come...
You can do a motion of support tonight.
Well, if that...
We don't even need to.
And then you should interfere.
Additional appropriation next month.
Yes.
Make sure to watch the timeline so that you're able to get into that, uh, additional appropriation cycle.
Oh, you talking about for the commissioners' meeting?
For the council meeting.
We'll get you, we'll get, we'll get you on the council.
They'll add it, they'll add it now.
We're approximately on the eleventh, where we would need the information by, to be...
But, but here's the thing...
Just for clarity, you want me to go to the commissioners' meeting, or you want me to go back to the council?
Hold on, I'm gonna tell you, go to the commission on the fifth. Bring the, the three quotes that you have.
Okay.
They're gonna have to publish the middle of February, and they'll appropriate at the end of February, and you'll be able to buy in March. That's...
The council will appropriate.
Yeah, that, that.
So after they approve your bids or proposals, then we'll appropriate...
But he doesn't need to send the auditor's office something to get on your appropriations list, can't you just...
We, if we have the information now, then we can take it from there.
I think you, I think...
So, we'll confirm we've got the right information.
We'll make sure you got it.
And we will make sure that it's on the appropriations, and I believe that deadline's about the eleventh, so we'll be, we have time to make sure we get it right.
Okay.
And Mr. Keel, if you would, from the, the minutes there, you would, we had the appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand, was that motion of support, not additional appropriation?
It changed to a motion to approve not to exceed.
It was a motion of support to originate, and then it changed to a motion to approve.
Yeah, but it wouldn't have been encumbered at this point, because it was never published.
Okay.
It was never encumbered.
Was not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand.
So two things, so we gotta do it.
Yeah.
Alright. We'll make sure.
Clear as mud, Mr. Campbell, I'll see you on the fifth.
Our apologies for the, the difficult process.
I'm gonna get it done.
We'll get you there.
Thank you.
Back up to new business. Item number three, consider setting rates for county per diem and mileage rates. So we've been provided with a worksheet, or a suggestion from, uh, the auditor's office. Uh, each of you should see, uh, description there for, uh, meals and incidentals. The rates from federal twenty twenty-five and then statewide for Indiana. For each individual meal plus incidentals of what they total, total coverage per day. Further down, you'll see mileage rate, federal being seventy cents a mile, uh, Indiana being forty-nine cents per mile. Along with the, uh, auditor's suggestions. Uh, assuming everybody's had a chance to review this, do you have any suggestions as a motion?
So, our current is thirty-five dollars a day and the state's is seventy dollars a day?
No, forty-six, forgive me for interfering.
Federal, federal, I'm sorry, you're right, federal, state's forty-six.
May I also add one more thing? The, the state includes five dollars a day for incidentals, ours does not, ours is strictly just meals. So, according to what we have, what we've been, uh, agreeing to pay for.
To clarify, is this a flat rate that we pay out regardless of what they spend, or is this an up-to that they can submit receipts for reimbursement?
This isn't, this is, it was recommended this be an up-to, just similar to exactly what they're doing, uh, in the Department of Administration for Indiana. And we were just trying to, we took, um, we also looked where we got the federal rates. We took where we go most commonly is Indianapolis, which is probably one of the more expensive cities in Indiana. And so that's where their rate came from, but the state uses this flat rate. I reconfirmed it, their website was not too clean about it, but I reconfirmed it, I have the email confirming those rates. And, um, the postage, just as a, I'm sorry, the mileage rate, just as a reminder, this has not changed from last year, the, the state rate, but we rounded it last year, that extra penny to fifty cents. That was it.
You don't have to turn it.
Yeah, so just to clarify, it is a flat rate then?
It is a flat rate.
Okay, okay.
I'd make a motion to match the, uh, state forty-six dollars a day, or do we take off the five?
I gave you all the information, your choice on how you wanna handle it.
Based off the cost of meals, I mean, forty-six dollars might not get you very far for a full day of three meals.
And, and then the other recommendation was, the state also has a rule which we don't have, and that is on the half-a-day travel, that they give you half of the allowance. So if you typically leave in the afternoon to get down to Indy, usually you have your dinner meal, and the dinner meal usually, in, in the way the rate works you see there, is, is double lunch and breakfast. So that's why, um, I, I was suggesting that we make sure that we add that into our... And if we need to go back to the commissioners to have them put that in play, at least this way they'll have the amount that they can put it in as far as a policy.
Being that they put a moratorium on travel, I think now's a good time to raise the rate. Right?
Trying to figure out why they want to do that all the time.
I agree.
Um, for additional perspective, I have some experience with traveling, uh, using the federal reimbursement rate, because that's what NERPC uses for their reimbursements, set by the General Services Administration. And similar to what you noted for Indiana's rate, the first and last day of travel is something like, I think it's seventy-five percent. Also, NERPC's policy is to take off, if you receive a meal as part of the conference and it was already paid for, it gets removed from it. I encourage us to adopt that as well.
Uh, yes, that is definitely, um, part of their policy too. But their policy's not seventy-five percent, their policy's only fifty, and I don't recommend going to the seventy-five.
From personal experience, though, it can be sometimes, it can feel somewhat unfair on a last day of travel where you're going to travel the entire day and you get back home at ten o'clock at night and you're, you know, getting seventy-five percent of it, yet you, you know...
But remember, NERPC's different because you're traveling nationally more, so when you are on, you are part of our government community, most likely you're traveling within the state with, there are some exceptions.
Alright, Mr. Novak.
I'd like to make, go ahead, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, breakfast would be twelve fifty, um, lunch would be twelve fifty, and dinner would be twenty-five dollars for a total of fifty dollars for the day. Putting the incidentals on there, doesn't matter how you put it, I guess, so.
A motion.
Be capped at fifty, it's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Uh, half the travel day, is that gonna be included or no?
That's, that's a commissioner's policy.
I think it, I think at the moment, let's try to break them out to probably, do we have three distinct groups? I'd say let's keep them as distinct groups and work our way through. Alright, so, motion on fifty dollars a day, twelve fifty, twelve fifty, and twenty-five for breakfast, lunch, dinner. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Auditor, if you'd call a roll?
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
And Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Now we have the question of the mileage, because we didn't discuss that in that motion.
Well, one, actually one other that you had mentioned earlier, let's talk with the, is there anything that we can discuss here as the half-day travel? So what it comes down to is, is as, uh, as I view it, as a financial body, as a fiscal body, we may have some leverage to discuss which meals are eligible based on half-day travel. Anybody have any thoughts on it? Mr. Auditor?
Uh, uh, you can, you get to prove the rate no matter what, but the policy has to be changed by the commissioners. So if you approve the rate tonight, you give them the ability to make that change, and we can ask them to put it on their next meeting.
And, and, uh, my experience is, if, if you tell them you're only gonna get half a day if you leave after twelve o'clock, they're gonna leave at eight o'clock and sit around someplace down there anyway. I mean, depends on when the meeting starts. If they need to travel the day before to get to a hotel, they should get a half a day's travel for that, that should be the policy. It shouldn't be a, you know, what time you leave, or it, it should be based on when they come to the commissioners and ask for...
I was giving you the reason, and it...
Right.
And so, as you say, a travel day.
And then a half-day is a half-day.
Okay, so, Commissioner Hollifield, if you'll, uh, take some strong, stern notes and...
I have to.
Alright, good. So that brings us down to the mileage rate. Forty-nine cents a mile for the state of Indiana, seventy cents a mile federal. Fifty cents a mile for the Laporte County in twenty twenty-four, what's everybody wanna do?
Motion to keep it at fifty cents.
Motion, do I have a second? Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Auditor?
One second. Just a reminder that no one has passed anything on half a day, we went right to mileage. So we're gonna do a vote, a road call for mileage.
Yes.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to bring this back next month.
A half a day is a half a day. A half a day is a half a day. Right, whatever the commissioner said, right.
Okay. So road call then. Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Item number four on new business, permission to hire a full-time janitor. This was one that I previously approved due to replacement of a, of a full-time janitor that left with an existing part-time employee. Motion to approve. I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Question. Sorry, I was a little confused. I don't, I don't, it's hard for me to bring up my notes on my phone, but apologize. This is just a replacement for full-time?
This is a replacement for a full-time.
I'm just, okay, because you were full-time to part-time. I, I misunderstood you.
It was a, it, just so you, to be clear, a current or previous part-time employee stepped up to fill the full-time role when a full-time employee left.
Got it. Thank you. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. A motion and a second.
Road call. Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
And Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Seven oh. Ayes.
All right. Number five, permission to hire archivist specialist deputy for the recorder's office. Madam Recorder.
Good evening. So I had a first deputy retire the second of this month. And I moved employees within the office. So now the archivist position is open and I'd like to fill that by hiring a new person. So my second deputy is now first deputy. My archivist is the second deputy. I basically promoted in the house and I'd like to hire the lowest paid position.
Yeah. How many employee, how many employees you have?
Two, a plus chief deputy and myself. Yeah, it's one of the smaller.
Like you got a lot of deputies, so. Seems like everybody's a.
It's, it's a title.
You got more deputies than Ron Heig.
Well, I don't know, but, yeah. I don't come up with the titles. I just know that I need one more person to replace the one that retired.
Replacing somebody that retired.
Yeah.
Is the salary still paid out of the perpetuation fund?
Yes, the archivist is, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Also, as a side, our mileage last year was 60 cents, just so you know.
I was just thinking about that and I pulled up the minutes and it, it was 60 cents.
I'm gonna say it's 50 cents.
My mistake. Might be just typo.
I thought last year's was.
Let's vote on the pending motion. Hope, one minute, please.
All right, so a motion and a second. Mr. Auditor, if you.
Okay, Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
And Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. President, would you like to revisit the mileage?
I would love to revisit the miles.
Mr. President, I'd like to make, change my motion from 50 cents to 60 cents.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Auditor.
Okay. Don't remember the order, so we'll just start again. Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. K, uh, Mr. Keel.
Aye.
And then Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. Number six, permission to hire treasury, treasurer's first deputy. Mr. Treasurer.
Hi, Dan Barry, LaPorte County Treasurer. Uh, just to bring counsel up to date, our 2024 fiscal year should be closed on time. So we'll be current. And we perceive our 2025 year all reports will be in the state gateway system on time, so. We're making sure, we're working through the audits, trying to fix any areas that need improvement. So we're working hard on that and then working on our internal controls. Uh, we did have one person leave the treasurer's office. We have five employees between Michigan City and LaPorte. Uh, one left to the private sector, so we have a spot to fill our first deputy, so we're asking permission to fill that spot.
This is for somebody that just vacated?
Yeah, they went to the private sector. They left us.
How many employees does your office have?
Six.
Six?
So you said, didn't that what you said?
We have, yeah, we have three in LaPorte, two in Michigan City and then the chief deputy and myself, so.
Thank you. Sorry.
In both offices.
Okay.
Not very big. Carry a lot of money, though.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to fill the position.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Mr. Auditor.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
And Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, updated of all fund ordinances and resolutions. I'll turn over to Mr. Novak who had made the suggestion by email.
This is, um, I sent this out to everybody. Um, this has been an ongoing thing, but, um, and I can only speak for the council. But it probably needs to be done countywide, but all of our ordinances, especially pertaining to different funds, where the, we got an issue right now with the animal control. The donation fund, we can't find the ordinance creating that. So those are things that we have to have and those are things that get. You're saying you have it?
Okay, I don't know, I was just.
So maybe we'll get it, but here's the thing. We need to, we need to have, regardless if we can find it, they need to be. This is what I envision, a binder in the auditor's office with that stapled to whatever needs to be there.
That was already started today.
And it's, and it's there. And then the other thing is, is they need to be online, they need to be codified, put in the place so that they're, they're maintained and somebody has control over this.
In prior years, it was a service, but we ceased using that service or supplying them the information. I don't know any more than that. AmeriGov was the name, but regardless, we're starting now and we'll be looking and seeking for.
But as I, you, that's fantastic. I can only speak for the council, but the commissioners' ordinances and resolutions and everything that you guys do, everything, the handbook, everything needs to be updated. So, I mean, so if, if you well, they'd have to check the previous director to see if, yeah. So.
Regardless, so I'll get with Mr. Bishi. We'll, we'll discuss this because even the old ordinances need to be cleaned up.
Right.
And, um, we need to put some controls in there so people won't have to run to the council every month.
Every one of them needs to be, right.
$12 expenditure.
Yeah.
So.
So that's my motion is that we authorize the attorney to, um, at work with the auditor's office to make sure all ordinances and resolutions are up to date for all the accounts.
Might I ask for a slight adjustment is, uh, we've had some extended conversation about a lot of these funds that are not tax-based, whatnot, um, whether they be advertised or not and, and where they stand on their, their administration. That that be covered in that ordinance as appropriate where it's not go superseding state code?
Yes, I think for the, for the home rule and the non, and the non-tax-based funds, I think you can set the rule within there as long as it. So for instance, if you wanna budget within there, if you wanna, you know, you can set the parameters to some extent. And then you could have instead of them coming back every month, you can have them come back every quarter or provide you a, a listing of monies coming in and monies going out. So that'd be something that you all can work through.
Okay. So a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So a motion and a second. Mr. Auditor, if you would.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Seven oh again. Thank you.
Thank you. Permission to hire an IT assistant. This item came before us very briefly before the meeting. Ms. Hale contacted me indicating that she has, uh, her assistant is retiring and would like to fill the position.
This is the assistant director?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just making clarify so everybody knows. Thank you.
So as we've done tonight on these other ones, I think we go ahead and I'll make the motion to advertise for that position.
Second.
Motion and second.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Seven oh again. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Amend the LaPorte County Council meeting calendar. Uh, in your package, you should see a new calendar with, uh, asterisks next to the 28th due to Memorial Day, but I believe the change was for the month of April.
No, there's two changes.
Two changes.
Uh, in the month of April, for some reason, we had the 22nd instead of the 28th, so we're correcting that, so it's, it's the appropriate fourth Monday. And then on the second one, um, there is, we could supersede, but there is another meeting already scheduled on the Tuesday, so rather than upset their calendar, we would have to move anyway, so we're gonna go on Wednesday instead. Uh, we tried to do it on the Tuesday, but, um.
Is it the 28th?
No, the, this is May, May 28th is a, uh, should be the Wednesday.
That's right.
Yeah.
Which was the first meeting you said was amended?
The April 28th. Because we, if you take a look at the old list, it said the 22nd by an error.
With that, thank you. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll be nice to plan a commission. We'll, we'll let them have their meeting on Tuesday, so I'll make a motion.
Motion to.
Approve the revised meeting schedule.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Auditor.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
And Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Approved motion of support for the auditor desk chairs and supplies from 7110 DLGF Homestead database funds. Uh, balance says of the end of 2024 was $313,193,313,193 and 92 cents.
We need to make this as a motion, uh, as a, uh, sorry, to, uh, permission to spend because you already gave us the motion of support at the last, at the, um, previous meeting. So we now need a permission to spend not to exceed 20,000. We thought that we might have some numbers with you, but we have not been able to, uh, work out everything that we need. We did replace a broken desk. We did replace, um, some printers and we, and, but we still don't have, uh, the other things, the laptop and some other things that we need. So we are still gonna keep it below, way, way below the 20,000, but it's a permission to spend.
So, uh, did anybody have any issues with changing it to a permission to spend not to exceed 20,000?
Make a motion not to exceed 20,000.
Second.
It's under discussion. I guess I'm, I'm confused why we're not doing an appropriation for it.
Because it's a non-tax-based fund and it is, um, it is, even though there's no budget, if there was no, I mean, if it was budgeted, we wouldn't have to, um, come before you, but there was no budget on this and, uh, this is not, uh, this is not an additional appropriation.
I mean, as you know, when we budgeted, that is an appropriation in, in the first place. So you're saying if it was budgeted, you wouldn't need to come before us because it had an appropriation. So how would that be different from now when it would also need an appropriation?
And we, we've already, we've already looked up the IC code on this and I'm sure you have too, and our interpretation is, is that there's nowhere it says that when you're looking to spend money for one of these accounts and we've been, we've been doing this on all the other, this, all the other accounts that's coming through here, same issue. So if you wanna start with us.
So my interpretation of the statute, and I'll, I'll read it aloud, it's IC 36252B. The county fiscal body shall appropriate money to be paid out of the county treasury and money may be paid out of the treasury only under an appropriation made by the fiscal body, except as otherwise provided by law. So in the absence of some sort of other exception, my impression is that we need to appropriate it.
It doesn't have an ordinance that supersedes that?
Well, our, our local ordinances can't supersede state statute.
Okay, if you go down to, let me just make sure I've got this right. Looks like 17G. Money deposited under subsection D1 or D2 shall be treated as a miscellaneous revenue. Distribution shall be made from the non-reverting fund established under the section under appropriation by the county fiscal body and shall be made only for the following purposes and to other expenses of the office of the county auditor, which allows us to spend the money from this, uh, fund.
Ah, but there's the line in there.
Notice of ineligible ability of standard deduction, collection of adjustments in tax due non-reverting fund. And it does not say anything in here where it says where it's a requirement to.
It says distributions shall be made from the non-reverting fund established under this section upon appropriation by the county fiscal body. It says it right there in it.
Mr. DiMartino, if you would, please weigh in.
I'm a potted plant until I am asked. G says money deposited under subsections D1 or D2 shall be treated as miscellaneous. So are these monies coming from D1 or D2? If that's the case, then it needs to be appropriated by the council. So I guess is a, I, I don't know where these monies are coming from.
I mean presumably if they go into that fund, they're for those purposes, otherwise they shouldn't be in that fund, right?
Well, I don't know. Obviously there's other sections. So if it's saying D1 and D2, so each county, okay. D2. They're, they're treating this as tax-based money. The statute is treating this as tax-based money.
That would be different than our understanding because this is, okay.
Well, I'm just.
No, no, I, I.
I'm just reading it plainly.
So therefore we'll put, we'll wait and we'll put appropriations for next month.
Thank you. I'm just reading the language.
No problem.
All right. Thank you. So we'll hold that over till the February meeting. Removed from the table discussion on insurance position in auditor's office. With that, I'm looking for a motion to remove from the table.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove it, make a motion to remove from the table.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All, all in favor of removing, uh, the insurance position in the auditor's office discussion from the table, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to see us move forward with this position in the auditor's office for an insurance person. And it would be a pat five. I think there was some discussion last month, what?
Comment.
Comment five. Sorry. Comment five. And, but this position is, is necessary, um, to oversee all the insurances and for the county to get a better grasp on the insurances. And we'd have one stop, we'd have one person that's in charge of that and take care of it. So I think with everything that's happened last year and the year prior, it, it's, it's essential that we get this moving as soon as possible, so. I would make a motion that we proceed.
Proceed as a comet five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I would like to just amend that, that the pay for this individual would come out of the insurance fund.
Correct.
Just want to make sure that it's understood that.
So that's an amendment. Do you agree with this? Mr. Yagelski?
So with this conversation, we mentioned last time about the idea of working together in the past. We've got nothing but the commissioners make rulings and we don't, the council has no decision or choice on this. I have no problem doing this, but if we're going to work together, I like that, I like that I mentioned last meeting, I like it to work together, so we all work together. And we form a regular, like I think Justin, you had mentioned, form a committee. And the committee actually gets the voting power to go and make decisions. Again, in the past, we've been excluded from this and they've added people when they want to, they choose who they want to choose. They've changed insurance policies and I'm just not happy with that condition that we're, that we're just going to go ahead and open up to another wing. We haven't got our foot on the whole program in the first place.
I dovetailing off of what Councilman Yagelski said, I pretty much completely agree with what he said. I have concerns about creating this position until we've created an additional structure or a better structure to manage the insurance fund in the first place. Otherwise this employee will be doing work, but we still don't have that oversight that we need. We don't have a firm idea about what this stuff is costing us. There's an insurance committee that meets, but we never find out what happens in those meetings. It doesn't get relayed to us very well. I think there's a lot of room for improvement before we create this position. I also have some hesitation about, we technically have a hiring freeze on the books. This is creating a new position. This person will be fully funded. They'll have insurance benefits, perf, et cetera. That's adding additional costs at a time that we're trying to be more austere in how we manage our county's finances. I'm not sure this is the right time to do it, but at the same time, I see the need for solving the insurance situation. So I'd encourage us to wait and put in place some sort of reform to the insurance committee before we create this position.
Mr. DiMartino?
So I've heard a lot about this and you say you want to fix it. Nobody's put forth a mechanism to fix this.
I, Mr. President.
Hold on one second, Mark, please.
I don't want to hear nobody, but okay.
You can't, you can't hear me?
He said I don't hear you saying
Can now.
Okay. No, no. I have not seen a email or a flow sheet or something saying in order to manage it, we need to go ahead and do A, B, and C. There's been, Carl Sender has tried to get a handle on the, on the, on the accounts. I don't think, there's, there's so many moving parts and the problem is you have A doing, you have Department A doing this, Department B doing this. You have, you have UMR pulling money out of the accounts without any notice or somebody will not see it until they, they get to it. So if you're going to restructure this, I think you need to start it with the insurance. They need to come in simultaneously. So the person starts at the ground floor. Just my opinion. And I'm not an elected official.
One question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No. So with that committee, is that's a joint committee established by the council and the commission?
I can't, I can't. So typically, I mean, so this is the deal. The commission usually has made decisions based on, you know, insurance. And I, and Mark says that they've changed policies, but not health insurance. The health insurance has been the same for years.
It's changed since I've been here.
Well, I can give you some examples, but if you, I don't think this is a meeting to go into, but I can actually tell you they picked certain employees out and gave them benefits because they felt deemed, they felt sorry for that individual.
I don't know.
That has nothing to do with insurance.
Right. I, I, I don't know. Yeah, okay. But so if this is why I'm leaving the council. So if the commission doesn't want to deal with you on that, you have the funding ability. Cut off the money. That's your power as the finance. But the truth is, is you all need to get together and solve this problem. And it's more than one person can do in one office.
And it's
Because it's a problem. But the problem is much deeper than the insurance committee. The problem has to do with the legacy. The problem has to do with, you know, that it's
We could create this committee today.
You can't create this committee.
Hypothetically.
You need to stick out an olive branch to the commissioners and say, let's do something.
We could have a committee in place and without this person being able to get in there and find out and get control of all this stuff, we're not going to have anything.
You're right. They need to come in at the ground floor.
So we need to get started on this. We need to reach out to the commissioner. We already have an insurance committee and the insurance committee met last week. I forwarded all the information to the president of the council from that meeting. So we've got another meeting coming up and I added Adam, Adam and I sit on there. We can add another council member on there and you already got a commissioner on there. So we're not going to get more than
I know in the past, there's been some concern from the commissioners, I'm sorry, about adding additional people to the insurance committee and it diluting their voting power in it.
There's no, there's no, there's no, it's not a
Mr. Novak, I think Mr. Keel's right. I know you have emotions on this thing, but so does a lot of other council members do. And I happen to believe that. I believe what Mr. Keel says, that we need to get some groundwork set in place before we start this thing. Because otherwise we don't like Mr., our attorney says, we, we won't have the power to do what we want to do. If you want to go and simply say, okay, we're taking the money from you, so be it. I'd rather not do it that. I'd rather start in the right direction and get this program off the right way.
So, but I, I think the confusion that I have is there is an insurance committee that
That exists.
Adam and I sit on, Mike sits on it as the auditor. Connie's on there for the commissioners and HR is there. And, but the thing is, is that's not, that's not what you guys are talking about. You guys are talking about a more robust committee to where all the insurances comes before that committee and you guys review everything and
Potentially.
You kind of have a
Back in
A handle. Hold on, hold on. Mr. Auditor? You were trying to get my attention, I apologize.
I'd like to give everybody a little bit more context on what's been going on. Since the beginning of the year and being in this position, I got to find a lot more information. Last Friday, after working from the insurance committee, we were able to have a meeting with UMR and it wasn't about billing. It was about finding out financial information. There is a way to find out the financial information every Thursday because on Wednesdays when they finalize their numbers. They do not start pulling out money as quickly until the following week. So it does give us a little bit of advanced notice. And this was one of the concerns of our treasurer, Dan Berney. So hearing that, that was one of the reasons why we called the meeting. We also found out that right now, currently, the only person who's been receiving and taking a look at these reports has been HR and they only do it on a monthly basis. Twice in the past week, the past seven days, we've had two accounts come to very low number, very low dollars. And one of them was actually in the red as of today, but we fixed that. And partially because in the payroll department, when we withhold the money from everybody's pay and then we take the county money, it should be transferred over. But the policy was to do it after the second pay period so that you get the entire month. Here we go. Our pay period was very late this month. So instead of waiting till after that, we had to start cutting it short. So one of the things that we're going to do moving forward is that we're going to try and solve a little bit of this by doing this on every bi-weekly period. If there's any money that needs to be turned over into the insurance funds, we're going to turn it over. The other part is, is that with the HR director looking at financial information, no offense to our HR director, that's not where we want her spending her time. Okay? We want her, we want somebody else with financial background, more financial background, with some experience. And to be able to get this information and then share it with the treasurer's office because they're there to monitor the bank statements and not get all of the, and get information, but they're not, as far as, you know, it's just like all the other accounts. The auditor's office is supposed to take care of all of these accounts as far as recording some stuff. So we're trying to get that under control. We do not have the manpower to do this on a weekly basis. That was one of the things that we've, we finally learned. So you wanted me to investigate. I've done some more investigation. You said this the last month and nobody, not one person has contacted me about this. And I find that very frustrating. And now you want to start throwing others high above with things that I can't control. What I can help is to have somebody work and we can get a proper level in this UMR system that the person, a financial person will not have any access to any HIPAA information, which has been a huge concern by our commissioners. And so therefore, when we finally started getting answers, we find out more and more of how possible this is. Before, we were going to have to have this person start finding out these answers. And in the meantime, I've been working with my staff, with Joey and others to get these answers, to figure out some of the problems. But we cannot monitor with the current level of people that we have. There are some other things that need to be monitored as well. We need to make sure that full-time employees are getting the benefits and not part-time employees. And I'm not going to go into details. I've spoken to the president about this. I've spoken to the commissioners about this. Where we need to be very careful in some of the departments who think they can hand it out like candy about this and the people are not working the 28 hours required. So these are other things that we're going to talk through, we're going to work through. And, but again, it needs somebody to focus on it. I'm going to tell you, if you ask me to do it, I can't do it under the current circumstances.
It's not as nice that you did it, but what I've told you, you just mentioned four or five things. The hours, people working. We got to get a lot of things in place before we get to that situation. This ain't going to take months, but we haven't followed up with anything we were supposed to do.
Well, then somebody speak up and be willing to help and work with me. I want to be able to give you what you need, what you feel satisfied with because of the importance of this. And I'm sitting on the side with you, next to you before, I know how important it is of getting this under control because we don't have ARP money to give another 1.5 million dollars.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Novak?
So the main thing that came out of everything last year, the meetings with Carl Sender and everything that we got was that we need one person to oversee all these different insurance accounts. Period. Not to say that we don't need a committee and we need other things, but we got to start someplace. So I, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with this.
I saw a question yet, but it's, I'll put my hand up. You can't, we haven't quit with questions yet, Mr. Novak.
By what? Well, we're at is we, we're at discussion when we have a motion and a second.
I think there was a motion in the sound.
Well, we hadn't voted.
I was going to, I was going to amend, let me amend my motion then.
Then I'll take
How's that? Can I amend my motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Ann. Making sure Mark was okay with it.
No, I'm not. That's fine. I don't care. I said
I'm amending my motion that not only do we proceed with this position, but we also, that the president is authorized to meet with the commissions, form a committee to sit down with the commissioners and get this insurance committee put together. So get something established so that we can get working on that ASAP. I don't see it, I don't see it as a, before you get all excited. I don't see it as all the council and all the commissioners sitting on this committee together. I see it as select people and select people and they're the ones in there talking.
Can't have too many chiefs.
No. So.
I totally agree, but really quick and as long as we have discussion. Just remember, we worked really, really hard for many, many years to get the HR position where we did. All of a sudden last year, because they didn't like it, commissioners, they were going to change, try to change the rules. They went to their attorneys. They found out that they can't supersede the council, but when they don't like stuff, they just change the rules. And I understand that, but guys, they just did that to us last year. But thank you. I do, I do get your point, Mr. Novak.
So that was my amendment to the motion.
Now, who was the second on the motion? You were. Do you accept the amendment? Any further discussion?
Back in April or May last year, I circulated a draft ordinance about how we might go about reforming the insurance committee. I'll reshare that especially with our new members and new commissioner and Mr. DiMartino as well, just so that everybody can take a look at it. And I hope that you'll consider it as a starting point. I'm certainly open to it being marked up and revised. But I think it, the insurance committee needs some sort of reform. And personally, I don't think I'll be able to vote on this tonight until we fix the insurance committee. I feel like that's a prerequisite for some of the reasons that I mentioned. And that's a disagreement opinion. But I, I like the idea of having a committee to explore how we might fix the insurance committee, a committee on the insurance committee.
Committee for the committee about the committee.
Feels very bureaucratic.
But, but then we're not doing anything. So we're stood, and we're going to sit here and spin our wheels a little bit longer. So I think we need to make a motion. We need to move forward and we need to, I, I got confidence in the president that he'll expedite this and
Call the
If you would, just the one thing I'm going to ask is will you please restate clearly your amended motion?
My motion is that we authorize the auditor's office to proceed with finding a person to be the insurance coordinator. I guess for lack of a better term, not to exceed a PAT Comet five, Comet five. And at the same time, simultaneously, you'll create, you'll get with the commissioners and we'll figure out, I'm assuming we can start off with, you know, three council members and a commissioner, however many commissioners they want to bring and sit down and get this thing worked out to where we can get a committee formed that actually has council input into the insurance.
And reporting out of it.
And reporting out of it. Right.
So that's
Long, right.
Thank you. It's long but clear.
Did you get all that?
Was that seconded?
Yeah.
I seconded that. I repeat that, but I seconded.
What he said?
Yeah.
Mr. Auditor?
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Pressle?
Aye.
Mr. Yagelski?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Keel?
Aye.
Mr. Karanka?
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer?
Aye.
It's a six one.
You just have
So, Mr. Hallifield, if you would, pass that along to new peers. We're going to start working down this path quickly.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. All right. Still under, now, we're moving under appropriations, transfers, and requests. Finally, a new section. Laporte County Community Corrections, requesting transfers within Community Corrections Grant 9107. See attached sheet. So.
Should look like this.
Yep. We're all trained. So it looks like we have receiving accounts being the office supplies and professional services coming from field officers, residential officers, coordination services, and insurance. Total transfers appear to be looking for a total number here.
Seventeen.
Should be $9,686.06.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You snuck up over all.
You state that again?
$9,686.06.
Motion to approve.
I hear a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
And for the record, this is grant fund money.
It's grant fund money. Correct. We have approval from DOC as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Auditor?
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Keel?
Aye.
Mr. Karanka?
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Pressle?
Aye.
Mr. Yagelski?
Aye.
Seven oh. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Laporte County Commissioners, additional appropriation wrongful death settlement. Suggesting a appropriation from riverboat to cover the expense of $430,787.94.
I provided you all the information in my State of the Union video that I sent y'all.
It was well done, well published. Thank you.
Little long-winded, but it was good. It was good.
Did you see the last
Yeah.
section that went through here a few minutes ago?
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to approve on a riverboat.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the comment, this isn't something that has a lot of debate. I mean, we don't have a lot of
Sure.
choice in it. Did you have?
I had a question for Mr. DiMartino about, you know, we have these settlements that happen from time to time. Are we, like internally as an organization, learning from these so that we don't get ourselves in these? This is expensive.
Yeah, so it seems that we have one of these every five or six years. The last time was a 2015 death. This was a 2020 death. So the cases that we see this in, they're, one came out of the sheriff's office. This came out of EMS. There are emergency situations. How, I mean.
Picking up where you're at, it seems very worthwhile for us to consider. There's always the opportunity and maybe this is something to keep in a don't necessarily keep in a fund or keep in a, you know, budget, but some way to keep that available in a fund somewhere.
You should be, yes, you should be funding this. This should be, you should have a slush account.
Yes.
Because, you know, it's been looking like every five years. The last time was $500,000 also in 2015 death.
Okay. Mr. Auditor?
If we're going to create more of a fund like that, then we're going to need a different ordinance. But in practice, it's a 4701, which is a liability, insurance liability account. That is what is supposed to be set up. It's budgeted for half a million dollars and that's where we're supposed to be taking out the minimum amounts that we have to pay, such as this, should be coming out of that, such an account. However, with the situation being as unusual as this, funds haven't accumulated yet in that account because it's an annual base account of funding it. And so therefore, and there was no other account that we could take it from that had in excess of $400,000. So that's why we were taking from here. But there, there is an account that's set up supposedly to handle this stuff. And in prior years, it's been a practice and in prior years, it's been a practice to be paying insurance premiums out of it instead of being paying deductibles. And that has been part of, part of the process that we're trying to fix it in the current year.
Good, I'm glad that we had all these extended discussions on working out a fix insurance as a whole.
And if I also may add, each department in both cases, if you speak to the department, you will know that they have done it. They, they've taken in, tried to address this with their training.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Isn't it possible to have it roll over every year?
It is possible, but we're gonna need you to pass an ordinance or resolution to make sure that we have a fund that will.
Or to fund that.
We'll have that next month.
Before the guy takes over.
Right now, we don't have any other down the pike that I can tell you about.
That's good. The only other comment is, and I mentioned this in email to Mr. Rosenbaum earlier today, the riverboat does seem high at a million, that's more than what I expected in there. I know you, you provided some details on that. Once you guys have closed your books, if you could give us an update on that, because it just feels like more than I was expecting.
Well, there was an additional distribution last year of one point three million back in October. And what happened was monies from that additional distribution, we did transfer that amount over. But there was an amount that we got, and I think that was like September-ish. And then in October, we got another amount, and the thing was is that we, we didn't move that over, otherwise this number, based upon what I showed you, would even be, it's right now sitting at one point three, and we need to move three over. Okay, so, that's where this got built up, okay? And we, so, we're fortunate to have it available at this point. And we've gone through in this account as best we can. I mean, I have a twenty-something out, page out, printout of what went in that account this year. And there are some things that we will make a change in practices on, based upon what we see. And we're not gonna, you know, we can discuss that further.
Based off of that, that October distribution, we, we probably should have a ordinance in front of us to transfer it then to Rainy Day soon, right?
Well, so, we, it's our plan to transfer it, however, the ordinance says that we need to have you approve it, so it has to be.
Yeah.
It has to be an appropriation for us to do that, for us to push it over, because the ordinance says that, that it requires your approval, sorry. Once we reach fifteen million, we stop doing it, but we're, you know that we're no longer there or that close anymore. So, we will, you know, we will have that on the next meeting, so that all of that starts getting, and then on a quarterly basis. This just happened where it was a unique buildup, and we can discuss how that happened.
And I'll note that, I know the process of us having to appropriate those transfers seems monotonous, but when, Mr. Di Martino might remember when we put together that ordinance in two thousand and twenty-three, when we researched it, the statute told us we had to appropriate it if it came from certain fund types, which this one fit that.
You had, you had to put the appropriation in the ordinance.
Okay, so, moving along. I have a motion and a second.
Yes, you do.
And Mr. Auditor, could you call the roll?
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler. Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Thank you, and Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
That's seven oh vote, thank you.
Thank you. Laporte County Coroner requesting permission to spend from Coroner Non-Reverting Fund for two items, first being not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars for training textbooks. Item Coroner.
Three twenty-five now.
It's two items.
Two items?
Okay, sorry.
Yes, I, I need some training textbooks in the office for the deputies that we currently have. When they go to school, they're given a master book and then modules. They can take the modules home, but they can't take the book home. So, to be able to look up what the answers in the modules are, they don't have a book. So, I wanna get four books that are a hundred dollars a piece. The whole set is three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, but like I said, I have sets of modules, I just don't have books.
President, motion approved. Motion approved.
Motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Hate to be a buzzkill, but we're doing a permission to spend here, seems to be an appropriation. When you look at our ordinance for your non-reverting fund, it says, "The fiscal body of the county may appropriate money from the County Coroner Non-Reverting Fund as requested by the coroner for payment of coroner expenses, et cetera, et cetera."
Mr. Di Martino.
I'm a potted plant.
But here I am asking.
Mr. Keel read that correctly, says the fiscal body of the county may appropriate money from the coroner's fund for things like training.
So, I'll change my second to a motion of support. Mr. Yagowski.
I'll change my motion, that's fine.
Sorry to make you wait another month, but it's procedural.
Okay.
All right, so a motion and a second, we went through some discussion, is there anything else left to be said? Mr. Auditor.
We see the motion.
So, we're at a motion of support in order to.
Got it.
Allow to spend.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Seven oh, motion of support.
Thank you, that is the second item, not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five dollars for a lodging related to a training class.
Yes, I have, I'm sorry, I have two deputies going down for coroner's training and certification, and I just found out last night that the Coroner's Association, although they pay for their lodging, they'll be paying from the fourth to the ninth, it's in Indianapolis, the class starts at eight o'clock in the morning on the fourth. So, I'm asking to pay for their lodging for one night, two people, for the third.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski.
I'm not quite understanding, why is this coming from us, it has to come from the commissions? We gave them money for such appropriations.
Because I'm asking to pay for it out of my non-reverting fund instead of the county money.
You wanna do it that, okay, just asking, that's why I asked. Thank you.
Your motion of support.
Yes.
I'll make a motion of support to approve the three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, here's the thing, it's a motion of support, they're going next week, so obviously, we're giving her permission to go ahead, and we're gonna fund it next month when we do it. So, it is what it is, so, motion of support.
A motion of support, do I have a second?
No second.
Got motion and a second. Mr. Auditor.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
And Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Seven oh, motion of support.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laporte County Probation requesting permission to spend from probation user fees for the amended amount of seven thousand dollars not to exceed for the purchase of three laptops and one Surface tablet. Mr. Eric.
How are y'all?
Doing well, how are you?
Doing all right. Mr. Novak couldn't have expressed it more eloquently, but yes, the judges are needing some laptops, and I'm requesting that we be allowed to use probation user fees and purchase them.
Mr. President, I can make a motion to approve, I've already, we went over this already with I T, so it's been approved already.
Yeah, Darlene is all on board.
Okay, so a motion to approve, we've run into the situation where this has been the, needs to be motion of support with the current situation, or not?
Not his money.
All right, not his money, so.
Your courtesy.
Then how about a second, will anybody second this?
Second.
No option and a second, any further discussion?
I didn't see the second.
Mr. Auditor.
All right, can we just get who seconded, because faces were down, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Seven oh, thank you.
Welcome. The next thing on the agenda is, was misinterpreted, it's not a, we're requesting permission to spend for drug court, it's requesting to appropriate that budget for the year, so.
So, that twenty-nine, that twenty-nine thousand three seventy-six thirty-four, that's the balance?
Court balance, yeah. So, we're just appropriating the whole balance, so when we need it, then we can.
So, since it wasn't advertised, I'll do a motion of support.
A motion of support, do a second.
Second.
Wasn't advertised?
Not as an appropriation.
Oh, got it, okay.
Any further discussion? That silence is golden, Mr. Auditor.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Seven oh, your support.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
As well.
It's a good question, I'll have to ask you.
Laporte County nine-one-one requesting permission to spend from Lit Public Safety, eighty-four thousand sixty-nine dollars for annual vest of phone service agreement.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is, comes up every year.
Is this, did we add this, my question, I guess, I'm trying to find out, is did we budget to put this in the Lit budget prior? I don't have it here in front of me, I didn't.
They're holding it up now.
And we don't have that adjusted, it was done that way live, it was put in.
Yeah, give me a second here.
If you can take a look in your, we've not received our compliments of, where we can look it up, our laptops.
Good night.
Should've got it on the agenda.
Good night.
Just saying.
Mr. Yagowski.
I think you said good night, I think you're going on.
I was just messing up, motion to approve.
We can't approve anything yet, we're looking something up.
Looking something up. Um, it's not looking like it, I'm only seeing four items on a, for E nine-one-one on a public safety lit. Com officer two, two hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars. Move to seven thirty-four approximately.
I guess where the concern comes up, if this is an annual thing, this is something we should normally put into the budget, at least, some, some amount to cover at least.
Wasn't the estimated increase from last year for the public safety lit gonna be like in excess of five hundred thousand dollars more this year?
But I think we budgeted all that.
I didn't think we.
Without having figures in front of me, I don't think so.
I had seen in your, in your general fund source budget, maintenance contracts, pulse point annual contract also has Motorola to potentially budget, one year was eighty-two thousand and twenty-four, or we could do a five-year contract. Is that what this is?
Oh.
This is the.
Is this something different?
No, that's a Motorola, that's a different Motorola.
Oh, wait, that's this Motorola.
I know, but they're two different Motorolas.
Correct, there's two different.
One's Motorola radio and one's Motorola phones.
Both eighty-two and eighty-four.
They're both eighty-some thousand dollars.
One's ninety-something.
Went up to, yeah, I think the radios.
And it goes up every year, that's the one that's for fifteen years, that was put in before I got here, and it goes up every year.
It's a thousand in there, so.
I don't know, this is. So, was this, was this published?
No, this was not published.
This is a moot, this is a moot point.
Yeah.
This, this, this might be these phones, because it, it says it could've done a five-year contract, but we did a one-year contract, right?
We did a one-year.
This, so it, it was mentioned, whether it got finalized in there or not, I'm not sure.
Do you wanna make, well, if it's finalized, then we don't need to go further, we can take it from.
When do you need to pay this?
I'm sorry?
When do you need to pay this, when's it due?
Um, probably tomorrow, like most things.
Uh, this is a contract start date of January first.
Contract ends.
It does not have a due date listed.
It runs for a full year.
Killing me.
All right, all right, so well, best we can do at this point is a motion of support, the way I see things. Mr. Di Martino, do you disagree?
I don't love this, because like, if we do a motion of support, she goes and pays the contract, which we're technically not allowed to pay, and then we're gonna come back here next month and find out, like, Public Safety has no money.
We gotta, we're gonna pay it, just, we'll put it on the next month's agenda.
Call them up and say, oh, we won't pay it till next month.
Sorry.
They're not gonna come and take those.
The phones work.
I know this, this came up, I think at the end of two thousand and twenty-three maybe, with one of your contracts, or maybe it was last year. Maybe make a list of these, and during budget hearings, bring them so we can all budget it.
Actually, you brought that up last year.
Well, one of them.
You did bring that up last year, as far as trying to put them all down, that we're going to be able to pay or not pay. You know, sometimes we can pay it out of our budget if it's in there, but certain things we can't, and certain, certain, certain contracts, they go up every year. So, it's, it's hard to budget or to say what it is when it goes up every year. Like the one for fifteen years, and I think we're on year ten this year?
For the, yeah, so.
Because it was here five years before I was here, I think, so I think we're on ten this year.
So, this is one of those items that we.
We'll hold this over to next month.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Auditor, if you could get us a updated balance on the, on the Lit Public Safety letter, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Would it be, should I request it out of something else?
Unless you've got it in your own budget and you can pay for it yourself, and then we reimburse.
We're gonna, we're gonna do what we can tomorrow to, so look, see what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we needed, we're trying to roll the twenty-five budget, but we've still trying to fix a few things in twenty-four.
Okay.
So. If you've got money in your budget, you could pay it, and then we could just transfer, move the money around next month.
Hmm.
They haven't rolled the budget. Sorry, Barb.
I think, I think what Randy's saying is, like, if you had eighty thousand dollars.
You've got money in your budget.
Yeah, you should have money, it's fully replenished, right?
Well, we do have the money, but of course, it's all usually for other things.
But you haven't had to pay those yet.
So, if I come back, then I ask you to replenish the budget, is that correct?
Next month.
Out of something.
Something.
Lit.
Yeah, yeah, next month.
If you have the money in your budget, you could pay it, I think.
Yeah, but you wanna, you want money in the budget that's for a service contract.
Well, you have other service contracts.
Yeah, use money that's allocated for a service contract, that's already budgeted for.
So, it will, if we think about it, for the budget process, for the whole budget process, we go through and look at, what have you spent out of certain accounts, what additional appropriations you've made in order to figure out what's the next year gonna look like, right? Because we've, we found out, okay, they raised their rates, or there's this new contract that we had to pick up, and we see that past data to be able to have a stronger budget setting process for the follow-on year. So, in this case, it would require a transfer to service contracts from some other account, and then we'll have to go through the motion to fill that account that we pulled it from. Does that sound amenable to everybody?
So, take it out of a service contract account that I already have in my budget, and then come back and ask you to replenish.
Replenish, because.
My service account.
Yes.
Next month.
And if, if that service contract doesn't have the money in it, transfer from some amount that you can handle it for a month, and then we'll have to go through that replenishment process, is that correct?
The issue is you can't transfer from one hundred account without your permission, so.
Well, it wouldn't be a one hundred.
We're just saying that out loud, okay?
But if there's a two or a three that has it.
Understand that, so.
We'll be working with you tomorrow morning.
We'll talk.
Actually, I'll be on a plane tomorrow morning, so you can
I'll be working with Matt then.
One more thing as
I mean, I can't join you on that plane ride.
And that's where she
One more thing as far as the animal control donation account, I believe that ordinance was passed when I was commissioner and it was either in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, because we got quite a large appropriation back then from over three hundred thousand dollars, I believe it was.
I've looked on the website at from twenty-ten all the way through, I can't find anything. I'm not saying it wasn't done, I'm just saying it wasn't uploaded.
Well, the way I remember it, Willie Millsap was also a commissioner at that time, so that would have been in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve. So I'm, I'm thinking because I can remember some discussion on it.
You all did a number of you all did a number of ordinances at that time, there were like three or four ordinances that you did with, but I, I could not find, not the donation. Found EMS donation, but not animal.
Okay.
Because that came from a private family that donated the money, and I'm sure we had to appropriate it somehow, had to do something with it.
Do you remember the attorney? In that, those years?
Uh.
Should have been Shaw Freeman.
No.
No.
No, it was not.
Wasn't Don Bogger.
No.
It was
It was Craig Bresji.
That's right, yeah.
Craig Bresji on eleven and twelve.
Doug or Craig?
Pardon?
Oh, Craig Bresji, got it.
Bresji, yeah, all right.
From Bresji.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Travel safe.
Last but not least, Laporte County Sheriff requesting permission to spend misdemeanor account for thirty-five twenty-three fifty for dishwasher repair.
I'd just like to give Ms. Houston some credit, she can remember what was done back in twenty-eleven, I have a hard time remembering what I did eleven days ago, let alone back in twenty-eleven, whoo. Got a couple of requests, one I think was a last minute, I don't know if it got on the agenda, but it is a permission to spend as well, but this one is a permission to spend for dishwasher repair in the kitchen for the jail. The repair cost is quoted as being three thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. We're requesting to spend out of the misdemeanor account for those repairs.
So before we go looking at motions, is this one covered by where we need to make an appropriate appropriation and publish it?
I don't think so.
I will take that as a no.
I believe that's his money, just like the probation user fees.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion of support, or just motion to spend the thirty-five twenty-three fifty for dishwasher repair.
Do a second.
Second.
Multiple seconds.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Yagelski.
Sheriff, was that the one that we replaced already, or that's not the one that we replaced?
The one we replaced, I believe, was five years ago that we totally replaced it, this one does not need to be totally replaced, it just needs like new washers and, and, and equipment like that, hoses and everything else.
Thank you. Just the one?
Mm-hmm, and obviously it's getting used three times a day, fifteen hundred times a day, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Mr. Yagelski.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
And Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Seven oh.
All right, so to Mr. Sheriff's mention, did get a request for a couple of stoves, I believe.
Couple of ovens, correct, it's one oven, but they're a double oven.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjust the agenda to add purchase from misdemeanor.
No, this one's going to come out of our asset forfeiture count in the amount of twenty-four thousand ninety-five dollars.
Twenty-four thousand ninety-five dollars. Of asset forfeiture. So do I have, I'll entertain a motion to adjust the agenda to
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjusting the agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so two ovens, asset forfeiture, is the asset forfeiture his money, Mr. Di Martino?
It's his money.
It's his money, so I'll entertain a motion. Either way.
Motion to approve.